Mr. Soul.
Present.
Ms. Aspas. Ms. Hasky. Myself. We have three, that's a quorum. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Montoya, would you lead that?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. The nation, your daughter, and your people, and the great good and the best for all. Thank you.
I've asked Mr. Noble if he would offer an opening prayer.
Powerheads. Heavenly Father, thank you for sunshine today. Thank you for the graduation week, Father. I pray for graduations to be successful and fun-filled, Lord. I pray that celebration happens. I pray for safety in these graduations, Father, and just pray that every student gets to walk across the stage safely, Lord. Just pray for those that are volunteering and helping during these graduations, and I pray for the families to drive safe to these graduations, Father. Lord, and I pray for this board meeting, that great conversations happen, that discussions are healthy and helpful, Lord. Just pray that you speak through our minds, speak through our vocal cords, and speak through our hearts, Father. Just thank you for everything you've done and will do, and just pray for the rest of the school year to be well, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'd like to welcome all of our guests that are present here tonight, all of the staff and guests, and I'll, those who as well are online. The next item is to approve the agenda, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion to approve the agenda as listed, president.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Soul and a second by Mr. Montoya to approve the agenda. Mr. Montoya?
Yes.
Mr. Soul?
Yes.
Ms. Aspas? Ms. Hasky? And myself. We have three approvals. They'll approve it as it shows. No further action on the consent.
Mr. Chair, I will make the motion to approve all the items listed as consent agenda. All the items are in the paper. I don't have any questions. All the documents, all the information that's presented, please be in order. So with that, I motion to approve all the items listed as consent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montoya?
Yes.
Ms. Aspas? Mr. Soul?
Yes.
Ms. Hasky? And myself, I approve. We have approval of the agenda. Possible questions from the board. Items have been approved. Number four, actions on consent agenda, been approved as it stands. Student staff recognition. Do we have any one year to be recognized?
Good evening, everyone. These awards I have here, there's actually two of them, and they are presented by the New Mexico School Board Association in cooperation with the local Board of Education in recognition of the outstanding role played in improving student achievement. And these awards can be presented to individuals or to groups. And this year, we had two, they were a group who was nominated, and also an individual. And I don't see either one of them here, so I'll just mention who they were. The individual is Mr. Tim Kircher, and the group is the Newcombe Middle School Unity Council. And so, congratulations and thank you. I wonder if I can give this to the signee to take back to Newcombe Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon, I asked you earlier if there were any reports from their one. Is that individual present? In order to recognize staff or community members from the audience who wish to speak to the board, we ask that you fill this card out. Select one person to speak from your group. Your board requests your cooperation in resolving issues, concerns, or asking you to do the following. The chain of command and consult with the appropriate school district personnel prior to discussing the issue with the board. Doing so will usually result in a more timely solution. Public comments and observations regarding non-agenda items that fall within the responsibilities of the board may be heard at this time. Although board members may provide a short response, the board is not able to discuss matters not listed on the agenda. Comments regarding matters under litigation will not be allowed. We are interested in your comments and concerns. Thank you. Please keep your comments. The three minutes are under. Christian Simo.
Good evening, CSD school board members. President, Vice President Wells, Mr. Soul, Mr. Montoya, our school board, our rest of the school board who's listening, hopefully, and Mr. Carlson, and our audience and staff. My name is Kristen Seima, and I would like to do a shout-out to three groups who in the last two weeks have made a big difference in our eighth graders' transition to high school. We were fortunate to have the opportunity to meet Ms. Brenda Yazi from NTU, who came to talk to our kids about going to the university. I understand that's the first time that our eighth graders had ever heard from a college or university, so I want to thank her for that. Also, we've been working on our relationship with our local chapters, and in response to the previous presenters from the veterans organization from Sinasti, they came out in force last night at our promotion. We were expecting three, we ended up with six, and that was fabulous. They have a vested interest in our kids, and we saw that yesterday at our promotion. I also want to thank Dr. Karina White, our Newcombe High School principal, who was instrumental in ensuring we had an opportunity to use the old high school gym for a presentation last Friday made by our northern agency grazing officials. They came out, we had a shipwreck, the secretary treasurer from District 12, we had the president, head grazing official, Mr. Begay, and we also had a local grazing official, Mr. Jimson Bryan, and they came out and talked with the kids about home site leases, also grazing permits, and how they can help their families through the youth employment program. So I wanted to just do a shout-out to all these stakeholders, and also Mr. Carlson for coming to our promotion last night. Thank you for that support. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. That brings us to number seven, reports from the board and the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent, we'll turn the time over to you if you have anything. Go ahead.
I am on that, okay. And so, a few months ago, I don't remember how many months ago, the board voted, and we have changed the way that gifts and donations are presented, and they have to approve the big ones, the really large ones. But for smaller donations, part of my job is to report out on them to the board, just so that they're aware, so they can see this. So I'm going to do this, and if anybody has any questions, the only answers I have to those questions are what's presented in front of me, so I'll go ahead and read them. The first one is Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation with a gift to the Sabatime Middle School, and they're gifting some instruments. The next one is the Santa Fe Dining. They're gifting to the Girls and Boys Basketball Program at Newcombe High School. A gift in value. The proceeds will go to the Peschlikai Scholarship recipient. A donor of Samlin County made out a check for $3,000 for project graduation for Kirtland Central High School, Shiprock High School, and Newcombe High School. $1,000 each. Eastern New Mexico University with donation for the National BPA Convention. That's the Business Professionals of America. The donation will fund travel expenses for nationals to the tune of $1,373. And also, from, this is Ms. Simo's evening, from the Simo family, a gift from R. Elaine Simo for the Newcombe Middle School eighth grade promotion class. A cashier check for $250 for items purchased for the eighth graders' promotion ceremony last night. Thank you for that, Ms. Simo, again. A donor, Cheyenne Begay, for Newcombe Middle School eighth grade class, eighth grade promotion, $200. The funding will be used toward the eighth grade promotion ceremony and/or eighth grade trips. From the donor of Newcombe, I'm sorry, New Mexico Career Technical Leadership Project to the KCHS BPA Business Professionals of America Program, a check for $1,275 to support the BPA chapter with leadership, professional development events, equipment needs to carry out activities, events, functions, promotions, travel for advisors and/or students competing in events. Let's see, another fundraising request. Sponsor was Tom Chee. This is for Newcombe High School, and let's see, it was a projected amount of $1,500. It's actually not a donation, that was a fundraising request. I'm doing donations, apologies, and fundraising requests. Now, these next couple are fundraising. For the fourth grade at Kirtland Middle School, Elsie Billy, the fourth grade pickle and popsicle sale at Kirtland Elementary, fourth grade Winton. The teachers purchased Otter Pops gloves and small sandwich bags for the children in tune to be raised $400. Also, I have a couple of travel requests that were approved that I'll just let you know about. Again, these were not unique, so they didn't need to go before the board, which is reporting. Kirtland Central High School for the Triple B will benefit community service. The purpose of the trip was the community color guard. The trip, the cost was $500. And it was, let's see, to Cantigs, Arizona, mile marker 85. EBV Stokely, Jeanne Lewis, the principal there, had a student achievement trip for A and B honor roll, and that was paid for with their costs, raised costs, and that would be for students that had high achievement. That's also a local field trip. They went to the Allen Theaters and the Quanis Park in Farmington. And the Jony Elementary had a trip, school-wide attendance plan, same kind of trip. The trip cost was $1,830, and it was a school-wide trip to the Allen Theaters. And that's the travel requests, the fundraisers, and the donations. Any questions from the board? Comments?
I hear none.
The only question or comment is really to express the district's appreciation to all the persons that have made donations, and they have their kids and students. Thank you.
Vice President Wells, members of board, Superintendent Carlson. Madam President, Suzette Hasky is online.
Thank you. Item B. Reports from the board members. Was there any?
So, I'll go ahead and start. On Friday, I was invited to attend the Drums of Summers, or Drums of Summer, at EBV Stokely. And I want to thank Ms. Lewis and some of her staff in particular for putting on that event. It went quite well, and I'm going to, I want to give a shout-out to these individuals. Ms. Harry, Ms. Pete, Ms. Ford, Ms. Francisco, Ms. Nota, and Ms. Bedaw for doing a wonderful job in ensuring that that program went off. There was quite a few people there. The entertainment was there, and the local radio station was there as well. They had an MC guiding it, and it was a really wonderful event. So I just want to thank them for that, and the invitation. Again, they did a very wonderful job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Soul?
Not at the moment. I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
I would like to report on a invitation I accepted to attend. FFA. Yeah, the FFA. Banks with it. In Newcombe. Recognizing the members of those that were down there. They did a... There were several awards given and recognition for those, and for that organization not have, not being in operation for, I think, what, three years now is all. They've done a fantastic job, and I was, I was really proud of the students and the staff. Miss Eaton has done an exceptional job. With, she started out with minimal support from parents, as well as, as the staff, and has brought them along very well. I was pleased to be able to attend that. Is there anything else from the board, Ms. Hasky?
I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
Thank you. I have an op here that says you didn't. I just wondered if you changed your mind.
Vice President Wells, members of board, Senator Carlson, Christina Aspas, board member Aspas is online.
Thank you. Ms. Aspas, do you have anything to report? We'll move on to eight reports and possible board action. A presentation, board action on ASU. Accelerate Dual Credit Program by Ms. Morris. There you are.
Yep. Good evening, board members. Mr. Carlson. Last time, last school board meeting, I presented on ASU Prep and ASU Accelerate, which are two partnerships with Arizona State University. Sharon, did you get my PDF? Oh, it's okay. So we have two partnerships with them. The ASU Prep Global are for the students that, for high school courses, for more rigorous and more accelerated learning. Sharon, yeah, I can go to the second one. It also gives them opportunities to have classes like college and career readiness, and some, we've had several kids do Principles of Engineering, and some areas where they're very interested and impactful. So this allows the CCSD students to have opportunities for a larger catalog of classes within their school, whether we're in Kirtland, Shiprock, or Newcombe. Sharon. So last time, we had an MOA for AS Digital Prep, which you guys approved of. We had a little mishap with our ASU Accelerate, which is our college partnership. The ASU Accelerate allows for the gifted students in CCSD to receive college credit from a number-one research university. So that means that they can transfer these credits to any college around the United States, whether it be a large state school or even an Ivy League. So this allows them to use dual credit and high school credits that will be able to transfer further than New Mexico. We've had a very high success rate. I was, I was getting those final grades out to the high schools today. I will give a shout-out to KCHS. We had two sophomores that got nine credits of college credit from ASU this semester, and we had four sophomores that received two, six credits, so two classes of ASU this year. And so they are well ahead of themselves, and they're doing a fabulous job. So, really was a very good program. So, tonight, we are asking for the confirmation of the memorandum of agreement, and Sharon has that to present, and this is the full agreement. Last time, it was just an amendment, but this is, we just did a full new contract for June, July 1st to June 30th next year. Does anyone have any questions?
Were, were there any major changes in this agreement compared to the last one?
None. They gave us the same pricing. For other partnerships, they'd gone up, but since we had had such a successful relationship, they've kept this one and the ASU Prep the same prices.
Splendid. With that said, Mr. Cheryl, can I make a motion to approve this item?
Do I have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Mr. Montoya is left. Mr. Sol?
Yes.
Ms. Aspas? Motion is passed.
I vote yes, too. Vice President Wells?
Thank you.
How do you vote, Mr. Wells?
I vote yes. Didn't I say that? I meant to. Thank you. Ms. Aspas, I understand you have a report for us. You'd like to go ahead with that?
Just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Donovan Russell. Went to the Drums of Spring over at KMS, and everything was coordinated, and especially with the food that was available and provided for, for everybody. And then the amount of gifts that were given to the dancers and all those, the singing groups, the drum groups, and also the two radio stations that were there. It was just really outstanding to see Donovan, Cheryl, and Berlinda, and, you know, they, they were all there, Mia. And, and then, and then I, the most impressive was seeing a booth asking if, if the community or those who are interested in teaching the Nava language to get with them, and they would provide details of how to become a teacher. And I thought that was really a, a good outreach and, and a good time to do that. And, and then we had other booths there, you know, with mental health and, and things like that. And, and I, and I'm really glad they took advantage of it because, you know, with the recent murder of Emily Pike, and, and then, you know, our, our own student, or the loss of our own student, Ashlyn Mike, it's just, when you look at those details and how the, the reservations lack resources, and when they get into whatever it may be, and they have to go outside the reservation, you know, things like that. And so, I, I, I was just very, very happy to be and to say that I was a school board member. And, and then also, he, there was also the Newcombe gourd dancing put on by the junior hot, junior class. And that in itself, too, was, was very well coordinated, and, and the, the community in Newcombe, it really came out and supported. And, and it doesn't surprise me. Newcombe's always been, been that type of community. And, and then, you know, I, I think with our ICO, and, and then I went to the band performance, and that was, oh, it just brought back good memories of Mr. Phil Thomas, and, and we have a jazz band, and, you know, they're playing music such as Adele, and, and, and they were, I mean, it, people got into it, and, you know, the audience was clapping, and, and so, you know, we, we really have some outstanding activities and people that who stand with our students and, you know, teach them and, and perform, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aspas. Is there anything else from the board? Okay, we'll move on. Presentation and board action on a resolution authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority by Mr. Dominic Setenya.
Thank you, Vice President Wells, Superintendent, board members. My name is Dominic Setenya, I'm the Director of Finance. This is the initial step that needs approval by the board to move forward with issuing debt. This is related to the ed tech note that we are moving forward with to keep our mill rate, maintain our mill rate. And the amounts that we are looking to issue, potentially issue, is up to $5 million. Not that one. That's the notice of intent. Yeah. So this is what we're asking for board approval on, is authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority. This really is the only thing that needs to be approved. There were some other documents that were made public, but those can be modified. Ultimately, this just gives us permission to move forward. And I stand for questions.
Any questions from the board?
So, we, we did find a typo in the first paragraph and the last sentence. It does say government units, and it should be governmental units. So what we are requesting is the approval of this document modifying the last sentence of the, with modifying the last sentence of the first paragraph to be governmental unit versus government unit. And that, when we print out that document and have the President and the Secretary sign it, it will have those changes and be captured in this motion.
Okay. With that said, I, I will make a motion to approve this a, action item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this action item. Mr. Montoya?
With the correction of the spelling, correct?
That's, yeah, I just want to make sure that's captured for the record, yeah.
Yeah, I just, again, I just wanted to state that for the record, that it would be changed.
I apologize. I didn't have to state that with.
No problem. Second, yes.
Mr. Sol?
Yes.
Ms. Aspas? Ms. Hasky?
No, I didn't. What was it?
There, there was a motion to approve completed application for financial assistance and from the New Mexico Finance Authority by Mr. Setenya. Moved and seconded and voted.
I, I can, what was that again?
So there was a presentation by Mr. Setenya on the resolution authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority. And the board heard his presentation and with Mr. Montoya, asked him, made a motion to approve it, and it was seconded and so now we're taking a vote, so do you, how do you vote?
I'm voting kind of blindly because I couldn't really hear the full presentation. How does, Mr. Wells feel?
Mr. Wells? He hasn't voted, and he's about to.
I will approve it.
He votes yes, so approve it.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and approve it then. Yeah, I, I could, I barely could hear the presentation.
I apologize for that. Didn't hear from Ms. Hasky, four of us have approved. We'll go on to C. Thank you, Mr. Setenya.
Yeah, I'm, I'm presenting next, I'm the next two.
Okay.
So motion passes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. The next one is a duplicate of this item, so item C, there's no further presentation. The action taken on the previous item covers this item, so no action or nothing to report for item C.
Okay, so yeah, so they both the same thing.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
So I'm ready to present D, item D, unless you are, have any questions about item C.
Ben, it was the same as the?
I'm sorry?
Ben, it was the same as the previous?
Yes, it was, it was the previous, yes.
We'll go on to D then, yes.
Um, D, if you can pull up the document, Sharon. This is a permanent cash transfer form that's required by the PED, and it does require board approval. This shows permanent cash transfers from, between various operational funds to grants and so forth, back and forth. This really is for cleaning up our general ledger towards the end of the year. These, I'm committed that this is not something we're going to be seeing at this level next year. This is really an indication of a job that we could be doing better in terms of managing and not having to have these track, these cash transfers at these amounts. If, you know, $755, or for example, line item three, 397, obviously some of those will come up, but this is, this is an indication that we could be managing our, our grants and our operation funds better. So I did want to point that out, that there are quite a few, there are some larger numbers. One to, to take a look at is from the grant 27407, Back to the State. That is reverting unspent money back to the state that we do not get to keep for this year. And then others, if you have any other questions, I can try to take a look, but really, again, this is, this is a step with the PED and requires board approval for general ledger cleanup before the end of the year. I stand for questions. Yes, sir.
Go ahead. So can you explain 27407 and its use?
Yeah, let me take a look and pull it up real quick. I was hoping to comment on that as well, that's, that's a lot of money to send back to the state.
That's the whole point of the question, Superintendent, is why are we giving them that kind of money back? I could see $2.50, but 361,000, that's a lot.
To account, grant 27407 is the family income index. And again, all that we can say is that is unspent money that is, that we are spending back to the state. I can't provide you an explanation as why that money was not spent down.
Superintendent, is there any specific parameters on how that money can be used?
There are parameters from the state, and I don't know if that's part of the obstacles. And I do agree that is quite a bit of money to be sending back.
I certainly hope that next year we do everything we can to spend that money down and not give it back to the state, because...
Absolutely. And that is one that is, is specific schools. It's not just given to the district, although this coming year, it will be given just to the district, and we'll make sure we spend it district wide.
Then you'll have control over that funding and how it's used and who?
Yes.
Who can spend it?
They've been giving recommendations to the district that the family income index schools from this year receive commensurate amounts from this year, but this district does have more saying how that can be spent. We don't have to utilize the same kind of numbers as this year or percentages.
Almost to the extent of discretionary on, but within the parameters of it being discretionary and...
Still within the parameters, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. What, where did this money originate from? Does that come from?
It comes from the state, yeah, yeah. So it's one of those types of grants where it doesn't, it can't roll over into the next year, so if it's unspent, you actually have to return it back to the state.
Well, I agree, that's a lot of unspent money.
Use it or lose it.
Yeah, to, I mean, to myself, this also raises some other issues about being on, the, the district being able to keep on top of some of the grants. So if we do have money that's coming to the end of its life cycle, then, then it probably needs to be better oversight on the part of making sure that we spend money in a time of the matter, and we don't have any fund reversions.
I, I agree. That's one of the things that we're advocating for in the Finance Department is to work more with the grants and the coordinators that oversee these grants to regularly meet throughout the year, to make sure that they're aware of their budgets, understand what they can spend it on, and to have quarterly meetings to make sure that there's plans consistent with 90-day plans at the, at the school districts to make sure that they're spending it down, and that's our contribution from the Finance Department versus kind of getting these things ad hoc at the end of the year, trying to scramble.
I have an open question. Mr. Sol?
I have not, nothing else, thank you.
Ms. Aspas?
Is that, do you have any question?
I can't even hear it. Can you put your phone by the?
I can put, or I guess you have...
By the podium?
I could do that for the, for the next presentation.
Yeah.
The, what we're looking at right now is we're asking for approval of a permanent cash transfer. It's a permanent cash transfer form that's required by the, the PED, the Public Education Department, and it, it shows a transfer between funds. All of these represent transfers from general operating into grants or vice versa for various reasons. And there was one that I pointed out, which was from our, a grant fund that was a use it or lose it, and we're transferring $361,000 back to the state. And that's, that's what we're discussing right now, is questions around, around the transfers, the amounts, and how we can better plan for that and make sure that we're spending down money in the future.
Grants, and, so I imagine there's a, a balance on grants, is that what you're seeing?
Well, the main reason, some of the, the, the main reasons for transfers from op, well, for example, if you're seeing a, a transfer from operating to a grant, that usually means that there was a shortfall in the grant, or we overspent, and the grant didn't cover it. So we're, for smaller amounts, we're having to use operating money to actually cover the amounts for, for the grant, and vice versa. Sometimes if there were excesses in grants that, and those grants allow us to roll that excess back into our general operations and roll it over into the following year. So that is why you'll see a transfers from a grant to an operating fund. And then also you have grant to grants, so basically you have excess and you can give up, you know, by... by rolling it into another grant, it gives you budget authority to spend it, so that's where you'll see, uh, grants, grant to grant transfers on the permanent cash transfer form that we're looking to have approved today.
So, is, is, um, particularly Gary, is he listening to my comment?
Yeah, I have you on the mic, on, on speaker.
Oh, okay, and what I'm, what I'm wondering is, so, you're, you're saying that, um, you're, you're not saying one particular grant, but I'm, I'm asking about, um, one in particular, which is Carl Perkins. What about, um, what is, what is that balance, or if there's any?
Um, for, for this particular conversation, there's no, there's no transfers related to Carl, Carl D. Perkins', um, grant. Um, that grant is two, four, one, seven, four, and none of those, we have not made any permanent cash transfers that have to be approved by the board. Um, so again, there's, there, there's no, there's, there's no transfers currently being discussed regarding Carl D. Perkins'.
Mm-hmm, okay, um, so what, what I, what, what I'm really getting, I guess I should tell you that first, but, um, you know, when the end of the year comes around and people are in a rush to, to spend, um, and schools are rushed to spend so that they can clear that, um, and to me, I feel like, um, um, how much is, is being focused on, say, like, all our, um, career technical programs, like, um, um, well, Bon Wilson, and then also with inside our junior highs and high schools, you know, the carpentry, um, if any welding, and, you know, those, well, you know, because they need material, they need, they need, um, equipment, um, safety items and things like that, and I, I feel like some of those are overlooked and, and not really focused on. So, that, that's why I'm asking in particular Carl's, Carl Perkins', and, and then, um, you know, the rollover, or, um, if there's a balance.
Um, I can't answer if there's a balance currently, um, and I can follow up with that information. Uh, but one of the, the, one of the comments, uh, or questions that was raised by Secretary Soh, or Mr. Montoya, I can't remember, I apologize, um, was how are we, how are we working towards making sure that we're spending all of our grant money at the end of the year? And, um, I'm not sure if you heard my comments, but one of the things that we're committed in the finance department next year is working with all of the coordinators and meeting on a regular basis, on a quarterly basis, such that, that they know exactly where their spending is, um, that it's consistent with, uh, you know, uh, ninety-day plans at the high schools, um, and that we're, we're planning throughout the year on spending versus waiting till the very end to spend everything. Um, it, so we're committed to, to helping, uh, you know, uh, do better planning throughout the year. Um, and that's how finance is gonna try to help address this.
Okay, and, and I hope you see my point, and, um, that, you know, I feel like, you know, these, um, programs, and, and then if we want our students' career ready, then, um, we're gonna have to start focusing and making sure that, um, our instructors for those, uh, particular programs are getting the funding they need as well at the junior high and high school and Bon Wilson.
Absolutely, and I think while you point out, um, you know, the Carl, Carl D. Perkins', grant, um, I, I think it goes, uh, our, our perspective is that it goes for every grant, that we should know exactly how the money should be spent, that the people that are in charge or responsible of spending that money understand that, and that they're planning throughout the year, um, and understand their budgets in, in partnership with finance, uh, to be executing that ongoingly, um, uh, and not waiting till the end of the year.
Hmm, and then, um, you know, then the same thing goes for just the teachers to also, you know, they need materials, they need supplies, and, um, if the only wish that's granted is the principal's wish, um, and, uh, and there's no, I, I, to me, I feel like there's no oversight, so, um, it's just the, the wish of the, the head of the schools, and so I'm wondering, do we have oversight, do we have, um, say, Car- uh, Carlson, Superintendent Carlson, or, um, someone over, you know, those spending, um, you know, we, we just don't wanna get rid of money just to get rid of it. We, we wanna, we, we need to have it to be spent on things that are needed.
Um, yes, absolutely, and I can comment for Mr. Carlson, unless you have any comments. Um, a part of the conversations in the, and we do have oversight, um, uh, Board Member Aspas. Uh, it's just, uh, there's, there's obviously improvements that can be made everywhere across the district as, as we look. Um, and I've been working with the superintendent to, to look at how we can better manage this. Um, and that's, that's part of how we're, we're looking at our positions in finance, who can support that in partnership with the coordinators, um, to make sure that it's, the, that the spending is consistent with those education plans. Um, and, and, uh, and, and that if anyone needs help, understanding that, that we're, that the finance department is an additional resource.
Mm-hmm, because I'm, I'm just gonna put it out there, you know, um, sometimes people don't wanna come forward because they don't want to make waves, and, um, but, you know, those are the very people that, that are teaching our children.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else to present, um, what we're looking for here is a motion to approve the permanent cash transfer form as, as is, as is presented.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I will make the motion to approve of the permanent cash transfer, Mr. Chair.
I second.
Mr. Montoya beat you to it. But we'll ask, we'll ask how you, we'll ask how you vote.
Yes.
Mr. Montoya?
Yes.
Mr. Sol?
Yes.
Ms. Aspas?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I'm also printing Zinni the next item when you're ready, um, Vice President Wells.
That would be E?
Uh, yes, sir, that would be E, Presentation and Board Action on Bank of the Southwest West Authorization.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, um, this is a, a simple approval, this is really just an update with our, uh, the Bank of the Southwest, one of our banks that, uh, requires board approval for who can, uh, uh, who can do what, the various assigned duties. So, this includes myself, uh, as the Director of Finance. The duties include access account, account signer, access to online banking, balance inquiries, perform transactions, request transfer, authority to add, remove from authorized list, inquire accounts, uh, are the duties that are assigned to the Director of Finance. Um, by approving this, this would allow me to, as the Finance Director, have access to, uh, the Bank of the Southwest and be a part of the authorized list. I stand for questions.
Look, the item looks pretty straightforward.
I agree.
Make a motion.
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve. Uh, item E?
I vote yes.
You gotta vote.
Mr. Montoya?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Aspas?
She said yes.
Oh, did she?
Uh, President Hasky, I think, said yes, um, um, Board Member Aspas.
I didn't say anything.
Yeah, Board Member Aspas, how do you vote on the updated Bank of the Southwest Authorization List?
Um, you were saying it was just update?
Uh, yeah, just to include the Finance Director to be able to make, uh, to, to access the, 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 uh, the bank accounts and, and make changes and, 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 uh, other duties.
Meaning yourself from?
Meaning me, yes, having the, the Finance Director added to the list, and it needs to be approved by the board, and the motion is to approve the, the updated list.
Okay, all right, yes, I, I vote yes.
And I vote yes, motion passed. Moving on to F, Presentation and Board Action on RFP Proposal Evaluation Results. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Go ahead.
Good evening, leaders, to the Board President, Vice President, Secretary, and all the board, board members, uh, Superintendent, my colleagues, and most importantly, the community members. Good evening, my name is Joel Ballasweet, uh, from the Speciality Department. So, I'm tasked today to present four RFPs to the board for approval, uh, in order for us, for the district, to be able to get, uh, specialized services for our students. So, for the first one, I'm going to present, um, RFP number twenty-five, sped one, five, four. So, this is in reference to speech pathologist or an apprentice speech and language pathologist. This was, uh, the bid was advertised on March fourteen and ended on the twenty-third. So, we're doing this in order for us, for the district, to be able to get qualified individuals or agencies to provide services for speech-language pathologists, uh, for our students with special needs. Um, these, uh, this were, this, the awa- award is based on the following criterias, like the qualifications, experience, and reliability of the firm, assigned personnel licensure that we're, that was presented on, uh, uh, on the applications, references that were provided, and the cost. Out of, uh, six vendors that submitted their applications, we, we came up with four, uh, that are in bold letter on, uh, uh, this presentation, that is new medicant to gifted nurses, uh, care staffing partners, and the stepping stones group. So, this, uh, the other two were not included on this recommendation because of the lower points that were taken from, uh, or that was, uh, when the team wrapped this, uh, the applications. The recommendations toward, uh, are, were those mentioned. The proposal, proposal highlights that, uh, I wanna present tonight is, the vendor has provided the agency's focus on students' overall well-being and the company's commitment to the profession, which, uh, we, hmm, we give importance to district to, uh, for the student's growth. The qualifications of personnel, including licensure certification, was exemplary, and vendor has a solid background working with special education students. So, those were just a few among those that were highlighted from, uh, uh, the vendors that applied for this, this specific, uh, position. The next one that I have here, the proposal is the RFP number twenty-five, sped one, five, five, in reference to a sign language interpreter, to provide these services for our students who needs them in order to succeed in the classroom. And, uh, it was also the same, uh, open on the same day, March fourteen, and closed on April twenty-three. Uh, the scope of work of this, uh, for this specialist is for them to provide sign la- sign language interpreter to provide direct and evaluation services to our students with speech and language therapy needs, in accordance with the specifications contained in their request for proposal that were provided to them. Um, just going to kinda move forward and again, highlight the, uh, the areas, the criterias that, uh, were considered during the review. The first one, again, is on qualification, experience, assigned personnel, licensure, references, cost, and, uh, the evaluation res- results are as follows. Um, we have here the gifted, the gifted got ninety-one National Recruiting, eighty-four Stewart B. Consultants, eighty-three Ed Theory, eighty-three, and the recommendations, the teams recommending, all for, uh, for this specific, uh, role or job that's needed for our district. The proposal highlights that, among the proposal highlights that, that I'm going to share tonight is the vendor provided detailed experience in providing services for school districts. And internal expectation to provide qualified, experienced, and certified personnel was provided in their vendor packet. Proposals identified providing extensive training for their employees to have strong understanding and providing the service that is being requested by the district. And that's for, for that RFP, number twenty-five, sped one, five, five. The next one, the next RFP is number twenty-five sped one, five, six, and this is in re- in relation to teletherapy services, uh, for speech-language pathologist. This was advertised April seven, and the deadline was May eight. The scope of work for this, uh, for the specialist that's being, uh, asked from the vendors is to provide telether- teletherapy services for speech-language pathology and or apprenticeship, for them to provide direct and evaluation services to students with speech and language therapy needs inside the classroom or in a specialized setting. Um, again, the criteria are the same as previously shared, qualification, experience, licensure, references, costs that were provided in their vendor packets. Uh, the evaluation results, Soliant, you have ninety-two, Eluma ninety-one, gifted nurses ninety, Pinwheel eighty-eight, PDS eighty-eight, Care Staff Partners eighty-seven, LSG and Associates eighty-six, Ed Theory eighty-five, National Recruiting Consultants eighty-three, Step-by-Step Speech Solutions eighty, Princeton Staffing Solutions seventy-seven, Speech with Miss E seventy-two, Customized Staffing Solutions sixty-nine. And recommendations toward B two were, are the following. Soliant, Eluma, Gifted, Landsoft, Pinwheel, PDS, Care Staff, LSG, and Ed Theory. Among the proposal highlights, company has certified specialized and experienced staff, uh, in telepi- teletherapy services. The vendor demonstrated compliance with Medicaid, worked with indigenous groups, and provided extensive information on remediation process. Vendor offers extensive training to their staff and provide information on therapy techniques specific to students. And lastly, uh, the RFP number twenty-five sped one, five, seven. This is referring to school nurses, and bid was advertised April seven, May, and closed May eight. The scope of work is for school nurses to provide assessment, screening, planning, interventions, evaluations, counseling, management, and referrals concerning to help medical care needs of our students in, uh, who are in need. Again, award is based on the same qualifications, experience, assigned personnel, approach and support, licensure, reference, and cost. For nurses, we have six vendors that apply. New Medican, Gifted with ninety-three score, Gifted Nurses eighty-nine, Soliant Health eighty-seven, Care Staff Partners eighty-four, Sunbelt eighty-two, Ed Theory seventy-eight. And we are recommending New Medican, Gifted, Soliant, Care Staff and Sunbelt. Proposal highlights are the following. Organizations combine experience support qualifications in providing services to CCSD. Company is accredited by the joint commission reflecting high standards in staffing qualified healthcare workers. Propuser provided a strong and detailed approach on ongoing, to ongoing support, continuity of service and quality of staffing. Those are the four RFPs that I'm presenting tonight and hopefully we get the services or support that the student needs, though we prefer in-person. I would, I would like to add that there. I stand for question.
Any questions from the board?
None.
I do have one question. Have all of these, all of these positions then have been filled? I would say it's closed, so I'm assuming the RFPs were filled?
So currently, they are filled with a few of the existing vendors that are currently tied to our district. However, there's still some positions that we're looking for a specialized, specialized person to be able to provide services.
Okay.
We still have a few that needs to be filled.
That was, that was my question. Ms. Aspas, do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
So are those all in-house or are they gonna be provided by video?
So most of this are tele, teletherapists like for speech. However, for the nurses, as much as possible, we're looking for somebody who's in-person because we have, they're currently, what we have are in-person. But for speech, we have through virtual, the other one that we have that are in virtual currently. Sign language has been, has been along, has been continually being advertised, which is most likely a virtual also.
Okay, so you're saying that you're still on the lookout for speech therapists and so how is the contract gonna be? Or is it gonna be drawn up to where if there's one that's available physically rather than through the TV or video, how is that contract gonna be made or is it gonna be drawn up that way?
So what we tried this school year is if we get somebody who's in-person, we immediately try to get them on-board in our district, get them tied to our district. That way we get somebody who's really present as compared to those who are in contract. And once we get that position filled, we let go of the contract person. We let go of the, we stop the contract that we have with them. We tried that and at least we got, how many? One nurse? Yeah, we got one nurse and one social worker at least this year that is in-person.
Because I, you know, I talked to a parent that had such services through our district and, and this was a couple of years back and was very disappointed and, and then eventually went to Farmington, but I, I, I know the things that we lack as a district, as area, but she felt that it was you know, just, just to, to have those services via video and just to say that we do, are in compliance is, is, is bad because really the, she felt that her children and, and the other children that are in need of those really progressed mainly with somebody there physically, not, not by video. And so you know, I, I, I remember that conversation and, and, and every year I'm hoping that, you know, that we could find those people and bring them. And but you know, I, I know that there's, there's some parents that, that are pretty involved and, and they really don't like, they, they'd rather have a person there physically.
Yes ma'am, I agree with you a hundred percent. There's a big difference with an in-person, so we will keep on looking for an in-person. That's the priority that, for me also as
Thank you.
Yeah.
May I add also that with the, with the what do you call it, the hand hand, what do you call it? For deaf people, the
Heart of hearing and deaf.
No, the, the hand signals, the
Sign language.
Sign language, oh my goodness, but you know, I have a cousin that, that is, you know, that, that, that has that deficiency and, but has prospered through sign language and, and went to school at, in Sanofi and at the school of, of, of the deaf and, and now as old as she is, she's teaching her nephew. And the whole family is engaged, the whole family knows, they can communicate with her and, and they're teaching the little one. And so I, you know, as far as certification and those things, it, it seems like those are the red tape that's really unnecessary.
Yes, we're going to continue and with this one, looking for those in-person and those who really who can, who will have the skills, the heart to be able to help our students, especially here in our district. Thank you very much.
Anything else on the board?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
You're making the motion? Do I have a second?
I, I will second the motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the presentation for acquiring.
Thank you.
Vote.
We need a, we need a vote now. Mr. Montoya?
Yes.
Mr. Saul?
Yes.
Ms. Aspas?
I, I say no because, mainly because of the points that I brought up. I really feel like we need to, and I wish the board would stand together and, and really try to fight and, and ask, you know, for these people for, you know, to be in-person. I know it's hard, but you know, I, 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 I wanna stand, I wanna say no. I, I, I think we've done enough through video. And the more and more, they are just falling behind. Thank you.
Ms. Hasky?
I approve the report, thank you.
And I vote to approve. Motion passed. Moving on to G, presentation and board action on revision, school year twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar by Ms. Amrane.
Good evening, board. I am bringing a revised proposal for the twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar. There are minimal changes, so I will go through the changes and then I will tell you why we're making these changes. So the first change, Sharon, can you scroll down into February? So February sixteen is now a PD day, professional development day. And then all the way to the bottom, May twenty-second is a half day as opposed to an early release. So those are the two changes to the calendar that you all approved previously. The reason that we are bringing forward these changes is because we have the ability to offer more professional development days to our staff, which is a concern that we had this year with the constrictions that PED put on the calendar. So as they lifted some of the restrictions, we're able to be a little bit more accommodating in requesting, we were able to add in that professional development day. So for example, this school year, we had to meet two markers in the calendar, eleven-forty instruction hours and one-hundred-and-eighty student days. So that limited what we were able to do in, in terms of professional development days. Now PED took away the one-eighty requirement days for students. We still have the eleven-forty instruction hours, which we've exceeded that and I'm sorry, I don't have the number off the top of my head, I wanna say it's eleven-sixty-four. I, I could be wrong, but we've exceeded the eleven-forty. That's even when we add in the professional development day on the sixteenth and then changing the last day of school to a half day. For PED to consider it a half day, it's three-point-five hours of instruction. If it's early release, it's five-point-five hours of instruction. This year, we have an early release, so five-point-five hours, which leaves students leaving early forty-five minutes, which doesn't give the teachers and staff a lot of time at the end of the day, the last day of school, to be able to clear out and take care of those matters. So if we change it to a half day, then that will be, you know, give the staff the time that they need and still keep us in all of the requirements that we need for PED and calendar. Questions?
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve this item.
It's been moved and seconded, then we approve the calendar as presented, this item is presented. Mr. Montoya?
Yes.
Ms. Aspas? Mr. Saul?
Yes.
Ms. Hasky?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, Ms. Amrane, go ahead with number eight.
Alrighty, so the next thing that I'm going to bring is a, is an idea that I wanna bring to you all for discussion. And what it is, is, I'll wait for Sharon to bring it up, sorry. Alright. Currently in our system with leave, the only leave that the district pays out when an employee leaves the district is vacation time. So this is looking at a couple of different ideas for possibilities to buy out accumulated paid leave for staff. So we've got two different proposals, there's, and, and these are just ideas. I looked at neighboring districts, Bloomfield has a proposal, I'm sorry, Bloomfield has a buyout program and Aztec also has a buyout program. So I mimicked this kind of along the lines of those two and mushed them together and tweaked them and came up with here's idea A. So keeping in mind, it's for employees when they leave the district and not, I put in the qualifier of excluding the two-forty-five because the two-forty-five contracted employees get the vacation time and that buyout provision is already in there. So this is for all staff that are less than two-hundred-and-forty-five days. And this first one, if staff have more than fifty-five days of sick leave when they leave employment and another qualifier, being employed with the district for at least ten years, then they could get paid out, for example, twenty percent of their daily rate or the days in excess of fifty-five up to two-hundred with a max being at five thousand. I went through that kind of quick, are there questions on that one? Well, and like I said, it's discussion for you all. Maybe I should present B and then let you all discuss, okay.
Is this, is this something you need approval on before you take it to the?
No.
Has has the union been presented with this?
No. Discussion.
Do we have a projected cost?
No, no. No, I, I wouldn't even know how to, gosh, no.
You could probably do an aggregate of those people that leave it on average and then tally out what the cost would be and then reduce it to the percentage that's being offered.
I have no other comment or question.
Okay, let me show you the other, or another idea, proposal B. So similar, just different parameters. So still again, only for contracted staff that are less than two-hundred-and-forty-five days. This one would be at ninety and it's open to all employees. So up above, it was employees if they're ten years or more. This one down here is just all employees and ninety days being the the bottom the, the, the minimum, thank you, the minimum. And they're paying out at forty dollars a rate, so any days in excess of ninety and then up to two-hundred at forty dollars per hour with a cap of four thousand. So like I said, those are my ideas, now it's open for you all to discuss.
Sounds good to me. Any discussion from the board? Any question?
Well, I just think because when that gets rolled over, that time is really property to the employee. They've earned it and quite frankly, in my humble opinion, if it's confiscated and no compensation is given for it, that's, that's not right. I think we should certainly give them something for their time that they've occurred over their service. So I think it's a wonderful idea.
I also think it's a great incentive for our employees, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think both options are good, but for me, I, given the budget situation, I would like to know more about the cost. Cost, cost analysis, costly.
Okay.
It's a good idea.
Could we, I have a question, would we be able to get the breakdown of how much when we do a, when we have to have subs in those places when absenteeism occurs, especially towards, towards closer to retirement? um, absenteeism occurs, especially toward, um, towards closer to retirement? Can we also include that in the breakdown of costs? Thank you.
Okay.
It'd be, it'll be more cost savings if, in terms of how that would offset the, I guess what it would cost to do this and then the cost savings that, that potentially could be there too. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to item.
Aye.
Aye. Presentation and Board Action on Employment Partner Program Twenty-Twenty-Five, Twenty-Twenty-Six. Termination of Understanding, MOU by Dr. White.
Yeah, echo, evening, members of the board, central consolidated staff and guests. What I have here is presenting to you on behalf of Newcom High School. Um, we have a program called Evolvement and this is, I believe, like a renewal, which I, this is my first um, complete school year at Newcom High School. And this was brought to my attention that um, this program is renewed, has been renewed, I should put it, um, on a yearly basis, like the past, in the past years. Um, if you're not familiar with the Evolvement program, it is an initiative by the New Mexico Health Department. And um, this memo of understanding, the MOU, is between um, the Evolvement program, like I said, through the New Mexico Health um, Department and Newcom High School. I checked with other high schools if they had this program, um, and they don't. So um, Newcom High School is the only one that ha, that would have a partnership um, with Evolvement. So if, just to give you a, a brief background, Evolvement program is basically a um, youth-led um, program and it promotes tobacco-free across the state of New Mexico. So it's funded by the Tobacco Use Prevention and Control Program at the New Mexico Department of Health. And the program is set up with high schools so that part of the initiative, I guess the main initiative is to empower our high school students to become strong advocates for positive change in their communities. Like I said, um, for tobacco prevention. So um, to my understanding, we do have a sponsor and if you look at um, the memorandum, um, or the memo of understanding, um, the advisor, um, who is also like the sponsor is Mrs. Sandra Lunt Hill. And she, she's the one that has been doing a good job having to work with our students. Uh, and in fact, we would um, identify one of our, select one of the students as like our ambassador. And that student will become like the leader, you know, as part of this program and all the activities that it's going to require. So it, it has terms of participation. Um, Sharon, if you could scroll, um, so it has terms of participation um, that outlines of what the program is about as far as how our students would um, be participants of this program. And Ms. Sandra Lunt Hill is an English teacher. She would advise, you know, this group of students who would be members to this program. Go ahead and just keep going. And the reason why I bring this um, presentation or the memo of understanding to the board is because it does involve, um, they call it the, uh, like a milestone and bonus completion. So the um, milestone payment, there's a payment that goes to this um, this program on behalf of our students at Newcom High School. So there were, um, let's see, if you keep scrolling down, there were about three to four milestones that they had to do throughout the school year. And most likely, these same um, milestones, these are just activities. Involves um, activities, training, um, presentations. Uh, so they, they have dates that they um, provided here, which they, you know, have been very involved throughout um, the school year. So they eventually did, you know, achieve every milestone and most likely, they would be getting or receiving that milestone payment of a total of one thousand six hundred dollars. And that would become um, the, the, the um, money that they receive is going to go towards like more activities, more um, presentations, however way that they're going to um, having, um, plan to um, do more activities for next school year. Uh, and this is just, um, go ahead and go to the next page. So that's uh, what comes with the program. And then the other one is the media coverage. So the media coverage is, it involves something in print, maybe a radio announcement, um, something through even television, um, and I believe photos. So um, I was a little bit, you know, kind of concerned about this, but we do have, my understanding and knowledge, we do have a district-wide um, media, um, like coverage permission um, that our parents, guardians um, pretty much have in place. On the other hand, they also have, um, from the Evolvement program, they also have a parent permission as well. So I said, okay, before I do sign, you know, this memo of understanding, I wanted to ensure that, you know, we um, are making disagreement um, with what's been outlined here. Um, and it does say, um, with the media, it is a one-time approval at the district level. So I wanted to um, bring this to your, um, to, to your attention or knowledge um, because I think, I was kind of surprised that um, I think other, like I said, high schools didn't, weren't part of this um, program or partnership. Um, and I think even new to the district. So my, my um, recommendation too is that I, I would like to continue with this partnership, you know, with Evolvement program because our students have, were very involved. They enjoyed, you know, the participation, the training, um, and they have plans to actually even present at the elementary level. But they've done so at the high school and um, middle school.
Is that your presentation?
Yes, sir. That, that, um, and this is renewed, like I said, annually. Um, so most likely, it will be renewed um, around this time again next year.
Are there any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Ms. Hill?
White.
Dr. White. Um, you, you said something about, um, the media stated something towards the end of your presentation. What was, why would you say that?
So it says.
Go ahead.
So it says, um, if you look at um, the, the verbiage here, Evolvement Media Coverage. It does have, um, because our youth, our students are involved in this program. It does say for um, any of the activities it may require. Of course, it says may be covered by parent radio or television media outlets to showcase the work New Mexico youth are doing to reduce tobacco use across the state. For Evolvement youth members, permission to participate in such media coverage is given by their parent guardian and the parent permission form collected for the Evolvement training. To be completed by the school principal for school, please choose one. So it says, I authorize the media to attend Evolvement e, events at my school throughout the year. Media attendance at Evolvement events must receive one-time approval at a district level. Once one-time district approval has been obtained, I authorize the media to attend Evolvement events at my school throughout the year. Media attendance at Evolvement events must receive one-time approval at a district level. Additionally, I must approve media attendance at Evolvement events each time media will be present. No district approval is necessary, but I must approve media attendance at Evolvement events each time media will be present.
Okay, the, what, what item are we on? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Run Aye.
The Kirmi?
No, the Aye Aye.
Okay, so is, is this a, a continuing um, item? Is, did this happen before?
To my knowledge, yes. That's what the sponsor, the advisor stated.
And then what was the decision on this part? What, what, um, the one item that you pick?
So that's, that was a question that we came across because um, I think at that time, or how the decision was made the year, last year, they did have um, the one-time um, approval at the district level. So the one that was shared with me was the, um, the second one. But see, I'm, I'm, I'm being cautious. I don't want to, you know, just mark this off and say, okay, we're going to do this again.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking at the enrollment time, usually that um, those um, permissions are, are usually signed by the parent or the guardian. Um, and, and I'm wondering, Superintendent Carlson, that how, how come that doesn't cover? Or?
It does. I don't know if you heard Dr. White saying that, um, this is already in place, but they have a secondary one. So it's like doubly covered.
I'm, I'm just wondering, did something change or because, um, you know, she said that she wants to be cautious. She wants to.
Right. She just want to make sure that she's covered.
Okay, so nothing has changed at the district level?
No.
Among our, when enrollment?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I will make the motion to approve this item.
It's been moved that this item be approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Moved and seconded that, that this item be approved. Roll call, Mr. I, Mr. Montoya?
Yes.
Ms. Aspas?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
President Hasky?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion approved. Number nine. Convene an executive session to discuss on collective bargaining regarding collective bargaining agreement. Negotiations are permitted under NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section ten, dash fifteen, dash one, page five, the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. Let me get the page.
Need a motion?
I need a motion.
Motion.
I motion. I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we uh, go into executive session. Mr. Montoya?
Yes.
Ms. Aspas?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hasky?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will now go into the executive session.
He said he was ready. I watched him. Reconvene in open session. The board has discussed in the executive session only the subject identified in the agenda as the reason for which the meeting was closed. Discussion on collective bargaining. Regarding collective bargaining agreement negotiations as permitted under NMSA 1978 section 10, 15, 1HS of the New Mexico Open Meeting Act.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we come out of executive session.
Yes.
Just asking.
Yes.
Mr. Sol.
Yes.
Just asking. Myself, yes, can you have four? Okay. Possible items for in request action items and or reports for next slash future meeting. A possible item for next meeting.
Yes, um, what is... What are you doing out there?
Just thinking around.
Thinking around the room, but I don't think it's that.
I swear I was breathing better right when I walked in.
Hello.
Are they just talking about verbiage?
Hmm?
German and Italian. We don't need them to go, right?
Um, the possible... The possible items for next meeting. The one thing that I wanted to put on the next is... I don't know how you would say this, but the, um... So the end of the year is here, and I brought this up earlier, but... Would like to know, um, if possible, what those items or the money... That schools mainly, um, junior high and high school. What they spent... What they spent on, you know, that whatever's rolled over.
Like grant money or nothing else?
Either that, or, you know, whatever was left over and they, you know, needed to spend. And would like to know, be given an idea of what that was on. And, um... That would be one item. And then the second is... Um, both from... High school and... Excuse me, and junior high. How are the, um... The technical, um, um... Subjects, how are they being supported? And as far as material, I remember visiting the carpentry at Sevita. And, um... They were in need, and I don't know if they're still... If that's been taken care of, but they were in need of a vacuum for, um... Lumber when they cut...
Vacuum system?
When they...
The drawing and...
Yeah, when they cut lumber and when they weld that exhaust system. Um, so those, those... I know they can go into money, but I think we have enough industries here to, um... See if they can be donated to, uh... PPE items. Um, but anyhow, I want to see how are they being supported? Um, at that time, I recall Superintendent Carlson, when we were there, that there was a real need of more lumber. And... And they were going around the schools and, um, finding broken desks, broken tables, and repairing those. Um... But as far as the welding portion of it, the rods can be expensive. And I'm wondering... You know, what, um... How are they being supported? And then I don't know if it's all available at Shiprock. And, um, and even for the jazz, jazz band that we saw, um... I think there's some things that could be done. Um, I showed Superintendent an outfit and, um, for the jazz band, you know, and, you know, for them to look sharp. And, um... But... I think we need to take a closer look at those things. And then including Bond Wilson. And that was why I was talking about Carl Perkins, because I know the strings there, they are being met over at Bond Wilson for their programs, but, um, as far as other grants, I know the strings require... There's certain stipulations to them, but again, I'm just wondering how they're being supported.
You mean it's being adequately supported?
Mm-hmm. With, I mean, just materials, they already have the well machines. Say at Bond Wilson, they have the well machines and, but you do need metal, you do need plates, pipe to practice on. And so I'm wondering how, where are we getting those or, um... How are we supporting, if any?
Anything else?
That's it, those are the two items.
Mr. Monfortia, do you have anything? Mr. Phoel?
Uh, just, when are we going to approve the budget? That's it.
Okay.
Because I think we're... Because I think we're coming up on a deadline.
Okay.
All the other districts have passed theirs, but ours is still plodding along.
Ms. Haskins, do you have anything? To move on to item 11?
Ms. Haskins, if you could speak one more time, you were on mute, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I said that I did have something in mind, I just can't remember right now. I'll email Superintendent when I remember, thank you.
Ms. Ford, thank you. Item 11 adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded and, um, Ms. Haskins?
Ms. Haskins, you have a vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Attler?
Um, I have a quick question. Matt, we're saying something about the budget is due, and it seems like we're, um... To find some theory to that, to that comment, or we have to pass on, or have a special meeting. And, um, I got a board decision here. The new... In... I mean, even though there's adjustments, we, it seems that, you know, that's what we need. We're not feeling it, which is...
I believe that will be part of a June 10th board meeting, special board meeting. Retreat slash special.
How do you vote then, Ms. Attler?
Yes.
Mr. Phoel?
Yes.
Myself, yes, yes. It is, you're right. This meeting is adjourned.